Mr. Chairman, it's a great honor this morning to recognize Mr. Larry Bragg, Elder at Faith Community Church in Massey Hill. Mr. Bragg, may we stand, please?
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day. Father, we thank you for bringing us together safely this morning and deliver us home at Days End. Father, I bring the needs of our government to you this morning, Father. I pray that you bless our nation and our local government. Father, I pray that our leaders receive God's wisdom and act in obedience to that wisdom, Father. Father, I ask for protection to cover all law enforcement, firemen, and women of our military, Father. Father, I thank you for many blessings that you have and will continue to bless us with. Father, I make this prayer in our Lord and Savior's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
You want to ascend the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
This time, County Manager Mr. Martin has a special announcement.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I am pleased this morning to introduce to you Quentin McFatter. Quentin is currently the Deputy City Manager in Kingsland, Georgia. He's been there since July of 2007, and he's also serving as the interim City Manager there since June of this year. He was previously the Town Manager in Green Level, North Carolina from 2003 to 2007, and he previously worked for the town of Knightdale as a planner and a planning assistant with the city of Raleigh. He is 39 years old. He earned a bachelor's degree from Wake Forest University and a master's degree in public administration with cum laude distinction from North Carolina Central University, and he is a credential manager by the International City County Managers Association and serves on that association's advisory board for graduate education. I am pleased this morning to welcome Quentin. We've had a brief department head meeting in which we introduced him this morning, and the bad part about this is he doesn't report for duty until January the 13th. So we have to wait on him to get here for another few weeks, but we're pleased that he's joining the Cumberland County Management Team. Thank you for letting me introduce him.
Quentin, welcome. Thank you very much. And before we go to the next item of bids, I'd like to take a few moments to give a little synopsis of the last 365 days of joy that I've had of being your chairman of the county commissioners. I would like to say that it has been an incredible honor to represent Cumberland County as chairman of this very distinguished board. I remember the first day that I got the gavel, and I went to our clerk, Ms. White, and I said, "Okay, we're going to put some seat belts on your office chair because it looks like this is going to be a wild ride this year." And I had no idea what some of the opportunities we were going to face and confront and ultimately succeed in accomplishing. I'm very proud of my term, but I could not have done it without the support of my fellow commissioners. And to these commissioners, I thank you for the respect and trust you gave me as a chairman, your insight and experience that you brought to the table, and your desire, like all of us, to make this county a wonderful place to live and raise our families. Mr. Martin and his staff, they've done an amazing job of being flexible and focusing on decisions that are in the best interest of the county, and their willingness not only to listen, but to act on some very controversial and unpopular decisions. All of our departments did great service to our citizens, but I would like to recognize specifically our Public Information Officer, Ms. Sally Shutt, and Mr. John Soles. One of the highlights of this past year for me was the success of our second and third Citizens Academy graduating class, and we also enhanced our Cumberland Networks programming. We worked hard to keep our citizens informed of community news through all types of different media, and they did a great job with that. I'd also like to take a special thank you to our county attorney, Rick Morfield, and his staff for their exceptional work that he has accomplished over the past year. There were many weekends and evenings that he and I had had conversations trying to meet deadlines, and he never once complained, but always was looking for the best interests of the county in our negotiations. Rick never told me we can't do anything, and this type of can-do attitude served our county well during some very fierce negotiations. Finally, I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to the clerk's office. Candace White and Kelly, without your professionalism, initiative, and calm demeanor, our county would not run near as smooth as it does, or at least it appears to run smoothly. I must also point out that both of them have a unique, almost sixth sense to anticipate the next crisis and have all the required information packaged together to allow for informed and educated decisions. Amazingly, they always accomplish this with a calm attitude, a warm smile, and confidence. I truly could not have survived this past year without each of you. This year is not without our challenges, though. Our veterans have a new Veterans Services Office to better meet the needs of these brave and courageous citizens. We say goodbye to our very dedicated director, Ms. Sharon Saunders, but fill that with an equally dedicated director who I'm sure will exceed our expectations. We hired a new Finance Officer to ensure that our county is committed to the best use of our taxpayers' hard-earned money, and we take every single opportunity to provide quality service while being physically responsible. We passed our first ever countywide animal control ordinance with the cooperation and input of all the municipalities. Dr. John Lottis should be congratulated for his persistence to public safety and his compassion for animals. Under his leadership and innovative programs, we have significantly increased our adoption rates and decreased our euthanasia rates. Our library system received national accreditation and awards for the remarkable service to our community. The Sheriff's Office once again claimed state accreditation for law enforcement in the jail. And for the first time ever, our Public Health Department was state accredited, and our health director, Mr. Buck Wilson, was named Health Director of the Year in North Carolina. Speaking of some of our exceptional staff, this past year, we restructured our employee classification system to ensure that we had the right people in the right jobs, and they were compensated accordingly. We also enhanced our Employee Wellness Clinic in order to help reduce the skyrocketing costs of healthcare and improve the health of your county employees. Lastly, we are taking an aggressive stand on the health of our citizens and employees by initiating a non-spoken campus on 15 of our county unbuildings this year and another phase to be enacted next year. Better communication and working together with nine municipalities has been a goal of all elected members of our county. Issues like the animal control ordinance and the sales tax distribution formula are good examples of working together to achieve a solution that works for all. If you think getting nine mayors and the chairman of the county commissioners to agree on something, just try to remember your Thanksgiving Day when you were deciding to remember what channel to put it on at dinner. It was difficult then, and it's difficult now. Probably one of the most challenging issues that came up the past year was the vastest state-mandated merger with a qualified managed care organization for mental health services. After much debate on whether to contract these services or merge with a state-accredited organization, Cumberland County opted to partner with the Alliance Managed Care Organization. The decision to merge was also filled with controversy on the abilities of the organization to provide this service. After a series of speed bumps, roadblocks, and U-turns, we were finally able to prevail, and by all accounts, has been a successful merger for the county, the alliance, and most importantly, our citizens. As part of this agreement, we were also able to work together with Cape Fear Valley Health System to contract out many services to our mentally ill citizens and institute the first ever Crisis Intervention Team, or CIT, drop-off point in Cumberland County, where law enforcement and first responders are trained to recognize mental health patients and get them the help they require and simply not taking the moonshoe ring or the detention center, thus leading to overcrowding and unnecessary cost of detaining individuals who should be treated and not detained. This is a very exciting program in your county, and it should help ease overcrowding in our detention center. Speaking of our detention center, we are scheduled to open this facility within the next 30 days. This facility was financed on a pay-as-you-go format, and there were no bonds or property tax increases used to build the detention center expansion. Although having a detention center will not stop crime, it will be one more step in helping reduce the opportunities for criminals who do commit repeated crimes to be detained. This past year, our Board of Commissioners supported the Crown Coliseum Board of Directors and supported a bold move to pursue private management of the Crown Center. Global Spectrum has been in place now for 30 days, and by all initial indications, there seems to be a lot of positive energy and confidence in the move. Finally, one of my initiatives that I tried to expand on while chairman was our place in the community. Our management staff and department heads, other directors, and our county manager must go through leadership training and customer service programs. At all levels of government, we are in the business of public service. By its very name, our sole mission for existing is to serve the public, and I believe that we have an obligation to not merely serve our citizens, but to serve them with pride. And in Cumberland County, that means we serve them with professionalism, respect, integrity, dignity, and exceptional customer service. As I slip back into the relaxing position of past chairman, I have every bit of confidence that our new chair, who is soon to be nominated, will continue to work for our county and every one of its citizens, as she has in the past. I look forward to the upcoming year under her leadership. Thank you again for the honor to serve as chairman of this great county. Thank you. Okay. Now that being done, we are going to take nominations for the chair, and I will open up the nominations. At this time, I would like to nominate a person who... This Commissioner brings a wealth of knowledge, education, experience, and insight to our board. And although these alone may not be attributes for nomination, the passion of this person in our community runs much deeper. Sometimes in this era of bipartisan politics and short-sighted politicians, we tend to forget the easiest political tool of all, and that is communication. And this communication is one of the best communicators I know, and although she probably has never been compared to a Ronald Reagan, she too is a great communicator. She has the uncanny ability to be in the middle of a tense and congested negotiation and put everybody at ease and working together. For those of you who know her, they know that she is a caring public servant, just the right mix of passion and compassion, and thoughtful when needed and doubtful when required. Being a public servant is not new to Dr. Jeanette Council. From educating our youth in the public school system to being a pillar on this board, she has always maintained high standards and an uncanny wisdom and insight. Dr. Council and I have a unique bond. From the first day I became the county commissioner, she embraced me, she mentored me, but she never judged me. This is what makes her such an extraordinary person. Jeanette is my friend, and she believes in personal responsibility, she believes in our board, and most importantly, she believes in Cumberland County. So it is with great pleasure that I nominate Dr. Jeanette Council for Chairman of the County Commissioners effective December 3, 2013, and I also move that these nominations be closed and that she be appointed by acclamation. Second. All those in favor?
Unanimous. Thank you.
Oh, and before she actually subs, I would like her to take care of the next meeting, although it's not effective till December 3. I want you to take care of the rest of the meeting, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I almost forgot. I need you down. Usually... Usually, this gentleman for the past year has been the one making the presentations, and he has been the one who has presided over all the meetings. I have absolutely never, in all the time I've known him, to be at a loss for words. He is a wordsmith. He can send out a memo not quite as fast as we are kids, but... He can whip out a memo, thank you. He can whip out a memo in a flash. He is a person who thinks completely outside of the box. The box isn't even close sometimes when Jimmy comes up with an idea. But he always has a unique way of approaching an issue, and he can come up with viewpoints that maybe you haven't thought about. I thought at one point he was going to say how much I frustrated him when I disagreed with him. But we agree to disagree, and we disagree agreeably. And once the chairman has spoken, I shut my mouth, didn't I? Most of the time.
I think she's telling me now that she's the chairman, and I better just start shutting down.
But he is a very warm and generous and caring person, and we have enjoyed holding on for the ride for this year. Every year, this board faces new and unique challenges. There is not a way that you can determine what's going to come next. One of our past chairs, Marshal Faircloth, used to call them scurried missiles. Just when you think everything is calm, here comes something else. And so, to the man who has held the chair for a year, who has marched through mud and water and sand, just as he did as a serviceman, to a man who, as a father, also knew how to father this board when it was needed and to lead when it was needed. We appreciate you and this... I brought my glasses for this. Wait a minute, I've got to put them on, can't read it. This is presented to Jimmy Chekeef, Chairman, this second day of December 2013, in grateful appreciation of your leadership as Chairman of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners December 3, 2012, to December 2, 3, 2013, from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, Jimmy. And thank you. Come around, shake your hand.
Okay. No remarks I've already had. We go back.
I'm going to open the floor for the nomination of the Vice Chair.
Mr. Faircloth.
Madam Chair, Ken Edge is a gentleman that I have known for a long time. I was looking around the room, and the only person I've known longer than Ken in this room is Lee Warren. But I've known Ken a long time, long before I was in politics and long before we actually took this dais together. Ken has been an outstanding Commissioner since the year 2000. He, along with the gentleman to my left, B.R. King, constitute the elder statesman of this board. And in my opinion, there's no way to describe how important that is to the fellow commissioners that sit up here, to have this kind of collective experience available to consult and just to have on the board when you're debating a tough issue. So that's extremely important. And Ken continues the tradition of good leadership that we provide for our board. And one thing about the... Of course, we're talking Vice Chairman here, but one thing about the chairmanship is, really, you're one of seven, and your vote doesn't count any more than anybody else. But when you sit in a position of leadership, you have a great deal of responsibility. And this individual is a counselor to the chairman, a person who fills in for the chairman when the chairman's not available, and a person who will look to be the next chairman down the road, as is our tradition. And at this time, it gives me great pleasure and honor to place in nomination the name of Ken Edge for Vice Chairman. And with that, I move that the nominations be closed, Madam Chair.
Second. I just moved in second that the nominations be closed and that Commissioner Edge be elected by acclamation. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Edge.
Thank you. I need to take a point of personal privilege, please, now. I did not follow the script, and I want to make some acknowledgements. First, please let me recognize all department heads for our county. Would you please stand? Thank you so much. And next, my husband, who I should have recognized first. My husband is here. Honey, I'm sorry, I forgot about you, too. My husband is here, and my son. I've got a row of family, starting with my newest family member, Mr. McFatter. Right here, I have a row of family on the first row. We have the mayor of Spring Lake, who's here, Mr. Ray, Chris Ray. If there are other mayors, please stand, I didn't see you. From the City Council, Ms. Katie Ann Davies, welcome. From Fayetteville State University, the Vice Chancellor for Institutional Development, Mr. Getchell Caldwell. Thank you. Now, did I forget anyone? But thank you all for coming. My son, I forgot my son. Stand up, honey. How could I forget? All six feet five inches of him. But he's... James is here. Okay. I'm sorry. We invite you, after this short meeting, to join us at a reception, a small reception. I have three colleagues here who don't want me to single them out. I will not call your names, but would you please stand? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. And we have two other elected officials, Mr. Warren and the sheriff, who are not there. Technically, you head departments, huge departments, but you are elected in your own right. I'm sorry that I didn't make that distinction earlier. But we do have a reception immediately following this brief meeting, and we will ask that you join us, just right here in this room. It is an honor and a pleasure for me to take the gavel and to lead this board. We have a very strong board. It is unique. No two of us are alike. We are as different as the functions of the fingers on a hand, and yet together, we make a fist that nobody can separate. We can get things done, working together. And as the chairman said this morning... Well, he's still chair, technically. As he said this morning, you know, it does take... Or one of you said, it does take four votes. When you raise your hand, it takes four votes. I'm going to do my best to represent the majority of this board on all issues and to be fair. If we are taking a vote, that is the stand, that is the official position that I will take always. I don't have any huge agenda or anything. I just want to be on time for the meetings and to conduct the meetings in an orderly fashion, almost as fast as Mr. King can conduct a meeting. He holds the record for the fastest meeting. He'll cut you off in mid-center to say, "Next on the agenda." But I won't quite do it like that, but he does run a crisp, a crisp meeting, very good meeting. But there are so many issues that face us as commissioners always, that we don't have the luxury of choosing a project, because our funds are already mandated by the state where they should go. So we don't have a fund that we can... Where we can mandate. One of the things that is facing us and that is imperative to this community and to this county is our school system. We have millions and millions and millions of dollars going to our school system. Some of you don't know, but the number of children in our school system here in Cumberland County exceeds the population of at least 48 of our counties in North Carolina. So we have a huge amount of money that goes to educate our children. We are in our fourth year without a formula. This is the year that we were supposed to come up with a formula and present a formula to the school system, because with all the other cuts, they don't know how they can function. I think my statistics say that there are about 512 employees less than we had the year before. I don't know. But what I do know is that we lose our young men and our young women when they are about in the ninth grade and while we are busy building detention centers. I think we also have got to dedicate funds for our schools, as all of us have said that we would do, in the middle grades, in the middle grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. And of course, if they can't read before then, you've already lost them. But class size is huge. Class size is huge. And if you go over to the detention center, I think if I asked the sheriff right now, he would say that most of the citizens who are there are those who have not had the... Or taken the opportunity to stay in school and to get a high school diploma. It's hard enough in these days to get a job with a college diploma. But if you don't have hope and if you don't have a high school diploma, then what do you do? You infringe on somebody else's rights to get what you need. And that's the second thing. The first thing is the school system, and it ties in with the second, because we also have to... We have a detention center coming online, and we've got to spend funds for that detention center. We have recurring costs coming with that detention center. And while we are building and staffing the detention center, we've also got to be building and spending money on our school system. Now, we've been doing it. We have been doing it. But we had a formula, and we don't have it now. And always, employees seem to be last. But you know, those of you who are employees or who have our department is, you know how much we appreciate our employees. We have... But you can't spend appreciation when you go to the grocery store. It's hard to spend it. And we want to keep our employees with... And we want to keep our employees with our county, because we've got some good ones. But with escalating healthcare costs at just about, very close to a million dollars this year, that's another hurdle that we have to face as commissioners. So I want you to remember just those three. The education, the detention center, and also escalating health costs, when you think of things that we need to do. We've also got the library system. We've also got the Department of Social Services. We also have the Health Department, and we've got all of these departments. We've got Child Support Services. We've got all of these departments that are necessary to provide services for our citizens. So when we think of things that the commissioners ought to do, should have done, could have, would have, ought have, whatever have done, think about the recurring costs that we have. And we have only one tax base. We can't go out and raise taxes tomorrow if we find that we haven't met our budget today. So I don't have a list of things that I want us to accomplish this year. I think we've done a pretty good job last year and the year before and the year before and the year before that. We are an excellent board, and I thank each and every one of you for electing me, and I look forward to working with you. Now, Mr. Edge said that I had talked too much, and I need to go to the approval of the agenda and next to Mr. Martin, please.
The next item is, item three is the approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
You've heard the motion. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Are there any changes to the consent?
None that I'm aware of.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Nominations to boards and commissions, please. Item five, Board of Health.
Yes, I'd like to place a nomination, Dr. William Fieldbrick and Dale Price.
Okay. We have two nominations. Are there others? If not, item B, the Local Emergency Planning Committee. Thank you, Mr. Faircloth.
Madam Chair, as I was looking at this item, I noticed that the firefighter position had become vacant because the person that we had approved before, apparently they found lived outside the county, and so they wanted somebody inside the county. So at this time, I would like to place a nomination for the firefighter position for the Local Emergency Planning Committee, the name of Ronnie Willett.
Ronnie Willett. Is there none?
And also law enforcement representative, Lieutenant Robert Dickey.
All right, Lieutenant Dickey. Are there others? Okay. Five C, Joint Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Mr. Edge?
I have one. Is Mr. George Hatcher, Sr.
Transportation Advisory Board, if there are no other nominations. There are six. I nominate Kena Farrington, Eloise Garvin, Angelita Marable, Carla Smith, Brian Pierce, and Deloma West. Are there other nominations? If not, item six. Goodness. Appointments to boards and committees. Mr. Edge?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, but before I do that, I'm gonna take a short privilege just to say to my colleagues on the board, thank you for electing me as vice chair of this board, and I look forward to working with each of you another year and serving the people of Cumberland County. With that, I would like to ask that we approve the five appointees for the Civic Center Commission. McBride Granis, Pat Robertson, William Q. Jr., for full appointment, and George Turner and Ryan All for a one-year appointment. Second.
Those in favor?
I say it. I say it in motion.
Okay. We move in second. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
And item seven, nomination and appointment. I move that we nominate and appoint to the Cumberland County Library Board of Trustees, Ms. Betsy Small.
Second.
All right. You've heard the motion and the second. Those in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Edge, I realized after I shut my mouth that I forgot to call.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Do you have other remarks at this time?
That is fine. Thank you very much.
Please don't hold it against me.
I won't hold it against you, I promise.
Thank you. All right. I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor? Unanimous. You see what I mean?